This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Public Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 1st. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, I am excited that we are back into being able to award the Brighton Believer Awards, so I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. McGowan, as we have two great awards to give tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Davis and members of the board. There's nothing better than the energy in this room right now, and nothing better than having a group of cheerleaders to help with the countdown, three, two, one, go. For those viewing at home, that was the best beginning. We are very, very excited to begin these again this year, the Brighton Believers Award, and have so many wonderful people joining us this evening. As those of you who have been around this before already know, the Brighton Believes Council selects nominees to receive a Brighton Believers Award for demonstrating our Brighton beliefs, character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. These award winners are students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, and community members. The nomination form is available on the website, bcst.org/believers. And just a quick note, because we do have so many students here, these are the people that you should try and be like. And the two people here tonight that we're celebrating are great examples of that. They're great models in our community. We thank those who nominated them for doing that. First, if I could have Katie Veranty come on up, please, along with Josephine and Monica Longi, and Kristi Salifa, who were the nominators. Come on up if you could.
Yeah, they should all go.
Yeah, sure.
Come on.
Mrs. Oi says go, so come on up. Kristi wrote about Katie Veranty, "There are no words to explain how deserving Katie is of this award. She started coaching so I didn't have to choose between my daughter for which team to coach. That was three years ago, and you couldn't get Katie to stop now if you tried." Well, nobody's trying. "Katie is such a hard-working, positive role model. She is always so generous with her time. She gives 110% to coaching and always does it with a smile on her face. She started coaching as a way to be there for me and her nieces, and now looks at her team as her own children. There is no one more deserving of this award than Katie, and the Brighton Junior Bruins cheerleading wouldn't be the same without her." Monica and Josephine wrote, "Coach Katie is a dedicated volunteer cheer coach for the Brighton Junior Bruins. Despite not having any children enrolled in the program, she devotes over 20 hours per week during the season. Coach Katie is highly regarded by both the cheerleaders and parents alike. She maintains a positive attitude and arrives at each practice with a smile. Her coaching style fosters an environment where the cheerleaders feel a sense of pride and accomplishment in their achievements. It is a privilege for Brighton to have a community member like Coach Katie who is willing to share her time, knowledge, and optimism with the children. She teaches the cheerleaders to persevere with resilience and a smile, which is a valuable life lesson. We are so fortunate to have Coach Katie as a member of our community, and her contributions are greatly appreciated." Katie, thank you so much for all that you've given to our children and for being such a great example for all of us. All right, now cheerleaders, don't go too far, because we need some cheering in a second too, for a very special person. I mean, you can go back over there, but I just need you to stick around. Mr. Fred, Fred, come on. And your nominee, Rachel Mattern, if you could come up, and Deputy Superintendent Limo, who's hiding on the hallway. You gotta help him fend off the paparazzi. A Brighton bus driver, Mr. Fred, was nominated by Rachel Mattern, a Brighton teacher and parent. She wrote, "Mr. Fred has been an integral part of the Evans Farm neighborhood for many years. His unwavering commitment to safely transporting our children to and from home and school has been a wonderful gift to the Evans Farm neighborhood. He regularly goes above and beyond to exemplify some of the Brighton beliefs' character traits, such as integrity, responsibility, and kindness. I was at a neighborhood picnic about 15 years ago, before my children even started school, and the conversation was about how wonderful the school experience is in Brighton and how amazing Mr. Fred is. After watching him over the past several years, I now know exactly what they meant. Here are some of the things that strike me about our beloved Mr. Fred. Number one, warm smiles and waves." Gonna really put you on the spot. "Even after children are no longer riding his bus, Fred continues to greet children and families with warmth and kindness. His friendly demeanor is such a wonderful way to start and end the day." Two, kindness. Fred's consideration extends to younger siblings who eagerly watch the big kids board the bus. He makes that moment, he takes that moment to acknowledge them and wave hello or goodbye to their siblings. Three, patience and compassion. When families face those hectic morning challenges, he will patiently wait and provides that extra moment for them to catch the bus, without even honking a horn. I just saw a couple moms say, "Yeah, that's me." Sometimes. His understanding of the make-a-difference in everyone's day getting off to a good start. Four, lost-and-found expertise. Fred's knack for keeping track of misplaced items, whether it's a lunchbox, hat, or mitten, is remarkable. His thoughtful actions, like holding up a lost mitten, demonstrate how much he cares about the students who ride his bus. Five, celebrating extracurriculars. Fred enthusiastically celebrates the achievements of the children who ride his bus. Whether it's a sport victory or other extracurricular, he cheers them on. Six, commitment to safety. Recently, during an unexpected street closure, Fred couldn't navigate the bus down a particular road. However, he ensured the safety of each child by allowing them to walk from the closest spot while keeping a close eye until he was sure they had connected with the receiving adult while continuing to supervise those on the bus. I wholeheartedly nominate Fred Cologne for the Brighton Believers Award. His genuine care, positive attitude, and commitment to our children make him a true asset to the community. Mr. Fred embodies the spirit of community. Even though he doesn't live in Evans Farm neighborhood, he is an integral part of our neighborhood. We are very fortunate to have benefited from his dedication to the families of the Evans Farm neighborhood. Several of whom who are here tonight don't have children on the bus anymore either, and still have themselves. For all that and so many more reasons, we celebrate Mr. Fred tonight. Please join me and congratulate him.
Kevin, all of the kids should get in. A picture, yeah.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, sure, sure.
Mr. Fred.
Yeah, so Dan, who would you, who would, Dan Goldman would like to take a larger picture. Who would you like up?
Of all the kids?
Yes. Mr. Fred.
Back to me, Bill? Okay, now, I'm gonna make an offer to all of you.
Well, mostly all, not...
Not everyone, not the principals. We have another hour-plus of some capital resolutions, property tax discussions, voting on election inspectors, and some financial statement discussions.
Look how fast they're running.
If you all are otherwise booked for homework and things like that, I give you permission to scoot out the back and the side. Good, good to go. Thank you all. What a great way to start the evening. Okay, it's on you, not me. Sorry, that wasn't appropriate.
Got stuck in a sticky trap on top of my head.
As we do with every public meeting, excuse me, we allow for the opportunity for public participation. If anyone is here who would like to either make comments or ask questions of the board, now is the time to do so. If you'd like to do that, please let Dan Goldman know.
He has alcohol.
Dan's out in the hallway, so you can't let Dan Goldman know. Just let Alice Arrio, she's gonna raise her hand. You can let her know, and we'll just ask you to come to the microphone. Mary, thank you.
Yes, please.
Not everybody loves to do that. I'm sorry about that, but so that way it's heard and it's recorded.
That's okay. You know, an entire teacher is kind of used to microphones and being in front of people. So, my name's Mary Meisner, and I have, I see an item on the agenda today, which I feel I stimulated with a letter.
You did.
Presentation on the property tax exemption. So, I just felt it was important to come here in person so you could put a face to the letter and know maybe just a little bit about myself, that I've been a resident since 2001. I really value the school system that we have. In fact, that played a definite factor in when I moved to this neighborhood. And now, on the other side of my tenure of teaching, as a retired senior citizen in this community, I am asking for some consideration around property tax exemption for those of us seniors here in the community that are on limited incomes. And so, I didn't know if this was something that was even on your radar, but I just wanted to kind of bring it forward to maybe have some consideration around what the ceiling is for qualifying for this exemption, because the town has one ceiling and the school district has a different ceiling. So, I'm putting it forward that perhaps we could bring those two together. It may not seem like $1,000 or two makes much of a difference in today's economy, but for me, on a limited income, an extra $1,000 a year does make a big difference. So, I don't know how many people this would affect in our community. I'm sure the assessors office could give more information around that, but you know, there's at least one person in our community that would benefit. So, thank you for putting it on your agenda, and I appreciate your consideration to this matter.
Thank you. Mary, I'll respond, and Dr. McGowan, if you want to say something, that's fine. First, you did stimulate this getting onto our agenda, so thank you very much for doing that. We appreciate hearing from anybody in the community, just on any concern. We asked our Deputy Superintendent Lou Alimo to start to gather some information for us so we could start to be a little bit smarter about it as well. I don't have a timeframe for when we're gonna have an answer for you, but tonight is the beginning of, okay, let's get up to speed on where exactly we are, maybe what some other communities are doing so we get a better sense for it. So, I greatly appreciate you taking the time. I think there's a lot of families in all-income levels where $1,000 is a lot of money. So, I think your concerns are completely valid, and again, I appreciate you taking the time. I also give her credit because I was discombobulated over the last week or so, and I didn't have a chance to respond to her until about two or three hours ago, but she was still able to get here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. McGowan?
No, just I think our Deputy Superintendent has prepared a really thoughtful report to walk the board through that information, and then, as you indicated at the beginning of the conversation, really to understand what this means, what we should be looking at, thinking about over a period of time, and exploring this as an option, and really thinking about the whole and how it could impact our entire tax levy. I think we'll have an opportunity to really dig into that for a little while now, as he presents that tonight.
I'll note that I think he has, it's number seven on tonight's agenda. So, again, Mary, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to add a comment or have a question for the school board? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the next item, which is approval of tonight's agenda. We've received the agenda. Our thanks to Kim Lanza-Fame, who's on a well-deserved vacation. As is the case at the beginning of the year, we get lots of updates to this agenda as things are popping all over the place. So, I think this is twice or three times amended in order for us to be prepared tonight. You have the amended agenda in front of you. Any questions, comments, or changes to the agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have received previously the approval of the minutes from the September 17th meeting. Questions, edits, or changes to those minutes? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? Next up, very exciting. We're gonna hear from Tracy Glazer with an update on the Visual and Performing Arts. Dr. Glazer.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was looking for the mouse, so I apologize. Thank you guys so much for having me tonight. I'm so super excited to be here. I know that we also have the pleasure of seeing you in two weeks, so those of you watching at home or who are considering maybe not attending, please do, because we're gonna have some student performances, and it's gonna be wonderful. I wanted to start off our presentation tonight to just talk about how the Visual and Performing Arts team over the last year has really been focusing on how we can really serve the community and really dig in. And some of the things I wanted to highlight are the commitments that we've made and how we just truly are honoring a lot of the great work that you're enabling us to do. So, I wanted to start off by talking about this year, our music program has really, really dug in and is honoring the uniqueness and the very special characteristics of every single child. And so, here, we have two children whose parents said I could use their photos, who really, truly have been really pivotal. One young lady came to us, and she's deaf, and she wanted to play the cello. And so, our team over the last two years has been working really diligently with her to figure it out. And we've been learning a lot of sign language along the way. The second child is a child with a visual impairment where his field of vision is about six inches. And so, we were trying to figure out, this child just transferred to the district last year and hadn't played an instrument in third, fourth, fifth grade. And so, in sixth grade, he sort of came and said, "This is what I really wanna do. I really wanna learn to play the violin." And so, we've made all these wonderful adoptions and been working with his family and working with him and all of the wonderful service providers that the district has, in order to figure out how to teach him the music and how he could read the music, when it's so small often in a lot of those things that we often get. And these are just two huge success stories, and just about our teachers honoring each kid and making it work for every single kid. And so, again, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a taste of being in the classrooms each day and really living a lot of the values that we espouse. Also, we've been honoring our students' goals and their potential. We had a student named Eliza last year who decided, "I wanna compose." There isn't necessarily music theory classes at middle school, but she took upon herself, "Compose." And the entire band and the entire string section played her song at a concert. Some of you were there. It was unbelievable, and she conducted a piece that she composed. And so, just seeing, like, what are our students' goals? What do they want? How can we expand upon it? And watching my team really bend over and figure out, like, how are we gonna bend backwards a little bit more, and a little bit more, and a little bit more for our kids. That leads me to this. We are really working to honor the multifaceted talents and interests of our students and make it work. In a lot of places, you have to make a choice. Do you wanna do X, or do you wanna do Y, or do you wanna Z? You know, especially a lot of us that are busy parents, are really just, like, how do we make everything happen? So, this young man, literally, and his teammates, ran off the baseball field, ran to the outdoor concert, literally played, ran back to the team to celebrate a win, and they like came back to us. And again, just seeing how, in most districts, that wouldn't be possible. And here, you can run from the BCSD baseball diamond to the outdoor concert and still make it back in time for some ice cream, right? And so, again, just honoring who our students are, honoring their creativity regardless of their age, and just allowing them the space to make and to be. That chicken on the right has such a great story. If anyone ever wanted to talk to me about it, I think he should have his own TV show. But again, a little girl just told me this beautiful story about how she wants to be an illustrator. She's six, and she's like an artist. She's an illustrator. And she said to me, "I wanna be an illustrator," and then she turned and said, "I am an illustrator." And I said, "Yes, you are." Over 25 students are currently working on their AP Art and Design portfolios in various different media, 2D and 3D. That represents a very significant growth in programming for this school year. Every year, we're seeing more and more students actually wanting to excel in these areas and take these classes, and offering APs different than maybe some other students are taking. Offering them those options, and again, we have such a wonderful district that's been honoring that in my high school partners. Last year, we brought back the TCMS Drama Club to honor our theatrical talents, and plays were added to fill our middle school and high school lineup. It's been wonderful seeing these kids come together, take those risks, gain those, I hate to call them soft skills, because I actually think they're the hard skills, getting up and speaking in front of a group of people, learning how to make a mistake and get over it, actually just lighting up a room. Those are the skills that Brighton kids walk away with. We've also been honoring our local festivals. Over 100 middle school students were honored at Monroe County Solo Festival in January, and about 70 NISMAs Solo Fest kids in May and June. We also successfully hosted the Junior High Monroe County Solo Festival, representing our Brighton families, families across our area. When they came into our middle school last year, families from Churchville, Chi-Lai, Victor, just kept commenting how well-organized it was, how much our teachers cared, and just how thoughtful the night was. So, again, being able to show that off to our community. And also, we have over 80 students that were in Area All-State Ensembles and all county festivals last year. And you can't make it up, right? How beautiful that is. They're playing as professionals alongside their peers, and they're really getting to excel. Also, we like to honor our milestone moments. Mr. Tappin, I got to hear you would be a huge, a huge highlight out there for so many kids today. But again, you know, watching our second graders move up and seeing how much the arts mean to them, and knowing that it's part of their transition, it means so much to me. They're absolutely adorable. Their passion, their ability to stand up in front of probably about 400 or 500 people, and just be a team and work together and be an ensemble, is really impressive, especially for a group that's probably about seven years old. So, again, that's, we honor that. We also honor our students' achievements. Our grades six to 12 Area All-State Band and Chorus Groups are absolutely phenomenal. We've seen an increase, especially at the middle-high level, and we know that that's gonna give us a lot of results coming up for the years to come. Helping a lot of these kids, when they are scholars in a lot of different areas, also become scholars in the arts. Also, actually thinking of these things as viable careers. Seeing these as achievements that aren't just extracurricular, but they're actually professional pursuits. It's absolutely fantastic. And that's a middle school group, and I'm gonna give you just a taste of a high school group. And again, it's not just that they get to get out and play, it's that they get to play among some of the most select musicians in our county and in our area. And they get to feel as though they really, really belong. Unlike other districts, we also help subsidize a lot of the programming, and that's really a testament to this community and all of the things that we collectively value. We make sure that every child can participate and be there regardless of their ability to cover sometimes some pretty exorbitant costs. So, I really wanna thank you for that. I also wanna say that I'm honoring our newest staff and our veterans' traditions. If you've seen the dinosaur costume once, you've seen the dinosaur costume a lot. But last year, the dinosaur actually made a journey down to Fresno, and again, the kids loved it. They had so much fun. Also, our students last year at the high school in AP Studio in Art were able to pick a teacher that they really valued and honored, and they were able to design a mural or a space in that classroom where they were gonna customize it for that teacher. And Mr. Heller is a hard critic, so I don't know that I would've picked him, you know, just in case. But you can see, this young artist really, really honored both Mr. Heller's vision, what happens in his classroom, and also just bringing together her experiences to life and making a legacy moment for other kids to come. We also wanna honor our community connections. Whether it's performing at the Rotary Hallelujah Concert, whether it's Bella Boche singers in a black church, you know, and hanging, and getting to sing with students from Nazareth and the University of Rochester, college students. P.S., we were the only high school invited and represented, thanks to Ms. Sebel. And just getting to see the Galasano Center welcoming, inviting our students. Again, we really are taking them out into the world, but we're also bringing the world in, and we're really getting our kids, letting them see the power of their voices and their choices. Also, this last year, we made a commitment to honor the experts. You can see that there's been a lot of people coming in. I wanna point one out in particular to start off in the bottom left. We had these wonderful salons last year where we brought in speakers to talk to students about their musical choices, their musical paths, and what music means to them. Some of them were coming, and we're on the top left, it's actually the Choral Directors Association National President, Dr. David Friling. He came in, he loved working with our students, and he was super complimentary on leaving. But underneath that, you see our security guard who happened to be here tonight, Randy. And Randy was a huge hit for Salon, coming in and sharing a lot about his life and his experiences with music, sharing his musical tastes, interests with the students. They're fascinated to learn more. Over to the right on the bottom is Dr. Murray Rosenthal, an alumni from the class of 57. He happened to be a dentist, but he also was an opera and theater producer, and coming in and sharing that. The top right, just days, and literally, I think, 48 hours, after winning a Grammy, Sarah Gezart came in to talk to our students and house a workshop them, for them. That's unparalleled access. Getting to actually talk to experts in the field, have dialogue, have deep conversations, and all of this is during lunch period, where kids are choosing flex, coming in and really digging down to do that. So, again, we wanna thank our local celebrities and experts, and also those of those who come back, especially our alumni. We also are working to honor our student star success. SpongeBob last year swept most of the awards at Stars of Tomorrow. We also had another student, for the second in a row, advance onto the Stars of Tomorrow Road to the Jimmy's Path. These are unparalleled things. Forty-one students are chosen from across the country, the most talented, the most selective. And this young lady and her family were so grateful because of the access that Brighton allowed them, and the access and the service of our teachers. Also, on the top right, three students are chosen from every single technical student in the entire region, which is made up of 46 school districts. All three were from Brighton last year, and they got to bring every show from every high school to life. And again, a lot of times, those kids are behind the scenes, and we don't always get to honor them as stars. They are superstars. We also honor scholarship. I think a lot of times, people think of the arts as the additional, the extra, or the place for kids who maybe aren't so into physics or science. That is not true. These are researchers. The BHS Acapella Student Directors presented at the NISMAs Conference with Sarah Sebel about student-run Acapella programs and the power of student agency and student leadership. This is a conference that never has student presenters, and the teachers were floored and learned a lot from them. You know, Sarah Sebel also presented alongside of them, showing them that even though we're done with college and we're moving on, we're still scholars in our field. I was lucky enough to take up some of our newest teachers to the Ron Clark Academy for a three-day conference about student engagement. If you saw the passion that our teachers have and that they bring back in the classrooms, one of them bought me a new book the other day that was written by him that just came out, 1%, and she said, "Tracy, I want you to know, every day, I give 1% more to the children I serve." We also need to honor our dance course options. We are blessed, blessed, blessed to offer AP Art History, AP Studio 2D, AP Studio 3D, AP Drawing and Painting, and AP Music Theory. We are all set up in setting We are all set up in setting our kids up for success. Last year, ninety-five percent of our A P Art History students enrolled scored a four or a five on the exam. The national average is about a three-point-two. Also honoring our exhibitions. I think that last year when I was here, I told you one of my goals was to get our students out there more, to get the art students especially out there more. Last year, our students were able to exhibit at Nazareth College, R I T, Nissata's New York State Legislative Show, the Brighton Library, Nissata's Regional Super Exhibition, R I T's Photo Award Show, the Upstairs Gallery in Pittsburgh, the Scholastic Art Awards, and many, many others. So we hit that goal and we exceeded it. And just getting to see our students see themselves as true working and selling artists was absolutely phenomenal. Honoring our potential, just getting to see our students again grow and achieve is unbelievable. And it's that potential that leads us to being able to honor our excellence. All across town, we are a school district to watch. And watching our kids sing at that performance was unbelievable. Also, we were able to take our students to the Jazz Festival this year where they got full center stage. We had to tell them that not every musician can get mics at every performance. That was something new for them that they really appreciated. But also taking them to the Lilac Festival and watching them have actual audiences of the community that aren't necessarily always their parents, loving and honoring everything that they do. And then I have just a few more, I promise I'm almost done. One of the things that we've been working on as a team is honoring the work it takes to strengthen our culture. For many years, there was a little ups and downs in our department. We're working through those. But watching my teachers' commitment to starting to come together, to work together with administrators, to start looking at goals, standards, curriculum, transfer goals, portrait of a graduate, and sometimes just coming together for fun. You can see on the bottom, T C M S challenged B H S's art department and music department to an omelet off. I want to be honest, B H S won, you know. But just even coming together around some fun things and bridging the gap between our buildings. On the bottom right, also honoring the work it takes. We have a lot of colleagues who are professional musicians, professional artists. And being able to go out and see Laura Anderson sing with a select choir from around the world that came to talk about medieval music and put on an amazing performance with the Eastman organ. And just seeing her colleagues there, it's unbelievable. We're so lucky to honor that work. I also want to honor our legacy. For the fifteenth consecutive year, our student has been named one of the best communities for music education in the nation. Designations are made at districts and schools just demonstrating exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. That's due to this community and this board and my teachers that show up every day and bring everything they have and often stay really late until ten-thirty at night until the last pamphlet or flyer or playbill has been picked off, off of the floor at the end of a show. It's, that's what makes us excellent, is the people who are driving this. One of our teachers bought everybody some fortune cookies this year, and she said, it's going to be a great year. Our goals for the upcoming year are to explore new alignment and pathways for high school A P coursework and graduation choices that are aligned not just with V P A, but also with the tech department. We've been working diligently to try to figure out, how do we take kids that are interested in technology, interested in the arts, interested in music, and create pathways that are designating them and getting them to a career choice that they want? I'm super excited to be able to come back next year and show you some of that work. And I, again, but I want you to know, we're working hard because this is where it's going to be. A I is real, and the need for human connection is more real than ever. And so we're trying to bring that humanities back into that tech so that we make sure that we're creating citizens we want to go on the world. We also want to honor student voice and leadership, reignition of the dance teams and the day of dance. It just keeps growing, it just keeps growing. I apologize if we've hit you up to be a chaperone, but I don't apologize at the same time because we just need the extra hands. Also, this year, we know that there's going to hopefully be a musical at Fraz. We've announced it, we're doing it, we have some things, we'll figure it out. But it's going to be unbelievable and again, just expanding the opportunity. And the reason I highlighted these is these are the things I told you that we wanted to do last year. These were our aspirations and we're there. So again, thank you guys so much for your time. And I just wanted to leave it with a student. This is one of the murals that she picked to do. Believe in you, we do it every day. And I want to say thank you to this community for believing in the visual and performing arts and helping us do it every single day. Thank you, guys.
Dr. Glazer, we thank you very much. The work that's getting done is, I think you used the word amazing a couple of different times, which is completely appropriate. One of the things that always impressed me about the department, having had kids go through all the schools, is you could be at any concert at any school, say Fraz, and teachers, instructors from T C M S and the high school would be there helping set up and break down. Just great community across all four of the schools. I really appreciate that about the performing arts culture, so thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Thank you very much. Next up, we have Lou Alimo with a presentation of the property tax exemption. I do not think there's any musical slides in this one, Lou, is that correct?
Oh, you'll be surprised.
That would be a nice surprise.
It would be.
It would really be a surprise. So, good evening. At the board's request, we've compiled some information for the board's consideration to update and to look at the property tax exemptions and specifically what's in the board's authority and in the impact that it may have on the community as I, as I compiled some data. So, two quick discussion items, overview of the board's role related to property taxes, the type of exemptions, and the current impact. And then, what I didn't put here is what a potential impact could be if changes were considered. So just to set the stage, some important relationships. The tax levy, that's the amount that we present to the community for consideration. That's what's in the board's control. That's where we measure it against the property tax levy limit. That's, you can see the formula there. That's when we look at the proposed expenditures minus local revenues equals the, equals the tax levy. To then compute the impact that it has on the taxpayer, we're looking at the taxable valuation of the district divided by that tax levy, and that computes the rate. So the tax, taxable valuation of the district is generally outside of the board's authority with limited exceptions that we'll talk about. The tax levy is, is what's most important and that's what you have the most authority over.
So I'll make, I just want to make a quick mention that all of the materials presented tonight are available on the website for people to review, correct?
Yes, sir. So just some important definitions to, to set the stage. So as we look at the taxable assessed valuation, that's generally administered by the towns with, again, with limited exceptions that the board can participate in. So any, an important concept is the tax, the tax base is the tax base, right? The, the board is responsible for the levy. So any changes to that tax base are simply a distribution, redistribution, right? The levy is what you control, whatever that divisor is, is shifts, just, just shifts things around, excuse me. So as we look at trends, and this is important in this community because we are relatively a flat community as far as property growth and appreciation in our tax base. Again, remember where that is in, in the formula. So just trying to, over the last several years, what the growth in our tax base has, has been. So as the levy goes up, we hope that the taxable valuation of the district also goes up because that minimizes the impact on the actual tax bill, what people are writing the checks for. So you can see the stability in our tax base over the last several years. And that's an important factor in our tax levy limit calculation. There's a property tax growth factor, and that's negligible for, for the Brighton Central School District and has been for, for a number of years. And in some of the years, because of changes or revaluations or some of the other exempt properties, we've actually had a decrease or depreciation in the tax base. So the exemption types that the Board of Education has authority to participate in. There are certain pilot agreements, and pilot agreement is a payment in lieu of tax agreement. Most people have heard of COMITA at the county level. Generally, they negotiate a commercial property tax abatement deal. If they deviate from that standard schedule, then boards of education have the opportunity to participate. That has not happened in my time here, and in fact, we don't have, we do not have any more pilot agreements. But that's certainly a possibility in the future. The aged income exemption is what, what I'm going to focus on this evening. Disability and veterans and the volunteer fire, fire or other exemptions that the Board of Education has authority over. So in the grand scheme of things, this is our exemption profile. So again, if you think about the gross assessed valuation of the district, you take off all of the exemptions, and that's the taxable valuation of the district that is considered with the tax levy to compute the tax rate. So you can see most of the town of Brighton, and we are the town of Brighton and the town of Pittsford, Pittsford, excuse me. But there, it's just a small portion of Pittsford, and there's no exemptions other than star exemption. So all of this is really within the town of Brighton, within the Brighton Central School District. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of not-for-profit properties that are in there. That makes up the bulk of our exemptions. There's school district property, obviously, we're not paying property taxes on that. Nonprofit religious organizations, New York State-owned properties, town, county, and special district, district-owned, air-exempt. Nonprofit medical, dental, and nursing is another exemption. We have nonprofit education that's included in there. And aged income exemptions, and you can see what the impact of that is relative to the other exemptions town-wide. Volunteer fire is a small portion, clergy, and then the municipal I D A, which is that Industrial Development Agency, COMITA. There was pilots last year, we no longer, those have been satisfied and those are back on the rolls as of this. So you can see the relative impact. So of the total assessed value of the district, almost twenty percent is exempt. If we look specifically at the aged income exemption, we could see that has increased three million dollars or thirty-nine percent, thirty-nine percent since twenty-twenty-one. So there is a growing exemption within the, within our exemption profile.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
When you say the age income exemption increased three-point-three million dollars, are you talking about the properties associated with those exemptions? That value is?
Right, the taxable valuation of those properties. Is that a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the exemption profile, again, kind of just setting the stage for the analysis. When we look at the aged income exemption specifically, the law was updated in twenty-twenty-three, and it did increase the limit up to fifty thousand dollars and then offered an additional scale to go beyond that. We were currently at the limits, and I don't think we've revisited it since twenty-fourteen. So that was an excellent point, and we haven't, we haven't revisited it. And this was a great opportunity to do that, to, to update the board on, on its impact and where others are. So this is the scale that is currently on the, the books, if you will, adopted by a previous Board of Education with the income limit at twenty-nine thousand dollars, receiving a fifty percent tax, tax exemption. And then you could see the income scale, as income goes up to the maximum of thirty-seven thousand four hundred, the exemptions decrease to five percent. So what the law did is just, updated law gave the, gave authorities, local authorities, the option to set this limit at fifty thousand dollars or up to fifty thousand dollars. When I surveyed my colleagues across the county, I only learned that the Rush Henrietta Central School District increased the income limit. And I think it's important when you're comparing up, up Brighton, when I go back to this slide and you look at our tax base and the growth of our tax base compared to a Rush Henrietta, which has a large commercial property, there, there's much difference, there's a large difference in their trend compared to, to what the Brighton Central School District would be. That's just important, a consideration is changes in, in tax, in the tax base. If there's a lot of new development, if there's a lot of new commercial properties or increasing businesses and increasing business income, it definitely impacts the, the gross tax base. So this is, you see, the updated option for consideration by the Board of Education is the new income limits and what the updated sliding scale would be up to fifty-eight thousand four hundred. In two thousand and fourteen, we, we presented a similar impact analysis to the Board of Education. So I just included that for historical reference purposes. So we have the twenty-fourteen Brighton Central School District impact and, and the properties that were at the different scales back in two thousand and fourteen, updated it to twenty-twenty-four, and the town of Brighton was very helpful in, in getting us data to prepare for this presentation. So this is our current census, if you will, of properties that are receiving the exemption. And to Mrs. Hatch's point, this is the, the exemption value of the property. So that's the cumulative exemption value for each of the properties that are receiving an exemption at the different limits. So then I compared that to the town of Brighton and compared the same Excel spreadsheet with all the homes in the school district that are receiving the exemption, computed what the exemption percentage it was, and compared that to the same number of parcels, homes that, that are receiving an exemption at, at the town of Brighton, excuse me. So you can see the difference in the total numbers, a hundred and fifty-nine to a hundred and fifty-three. But if you look at that fifty percent exemption, a hundred and nine are currently receiving the fifty percent maximum exemption, and two hundred and one at the town, the town maximum income level are receiving that exemption. When we look at the net impact that the exemptions have on our tax base, and then as that computes into the tax rate, you could see it's, the twenty-twenty-four school district impact is fourteen cents per thousand. The town of Brighton is twenty-five cents per thousand. So as, as a percentage of the total tax base that's exempt, it's about a half a percent at current levels, and the town is point-nine percent. So just, you can kind of project, if it was to increase to exactly what the town is doing, the tax base would depreciate point-four percent. And then when we look at the impact on two hundred thousand, just to be consistent with the analysis we did in two thousand and fourteen, it was thirty-four dollars back in two thousand and fourteen. The impact today in current dollars is twenty-seven. And if we were to doubt the town without any changes, it would be forty-nine dollars, again, on an average home with a taxable assessed value of two hundred thousand dollars. Any questions on that or the computations?
Nope.
So then, what I tried to do is present some alternative scenarios. And again, we look at what the historical has been compared to the, the parcels and the census right now of the, the parcels that are receiving the exemption. Again, similar impact. So if we said no sliding scale, and we were just to say the board was considering a fifty percent exemption, for instance, we would have the hundred and fifty-nine homes, which is from the previous slide, the total number of homes, and we gave everyone who was on that previous slide a fifty percent exemption. That would increase the total exemption to eleven-point-six million dollars rounding. So that would add just, you know, a penny and a half on the tax rate, point-zero-five percent and three dollars. So if we just said all the people who are currently receiving an income percentage right now, but we wanted to keep that maximum limit, limit at thirty-seven, thirty-seven-four, then all, all the people would be, all the citizens would be receiving a fifty percent exemption. So that would be the impact of that. If we were to do fifty percent at the towns with the fifty thousand, again, the two hundred, the two hundred people who were on that previous slide at that top line, not adopting the sliding scale, the value of that was fifteen, about sixteen million dollars. That would add an additional seven cents, point-two-five percent of the tax base, or fourteen dollars. So I just, again, just for discussion purposes, I threw a couple scenarios there just to understand what the economic impact would be of the different scenarios. So items to consider, increasing the household, increasing the household income exemption threshold provides tax relief to low-income, fixed-income households, no question. It does decrease the tax base, though, and spreads more of the tax levy to other taxpayers who would not qualify for the exemption. There are limitations to my analysis. Again, it's based on a current census of, you know, citizens that have applied for the exemption. Changing level may increase the number of applications and it may, you know, there may be subject to change. It's not a, it's not a definitive answer, it's just general magnitude of impact of the different options. So other options to consider is eliminate the exemption, leave the current exemption schedule in place and reevaluate again at the board's discretion, change the current exemption schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year up to the statutory limits or some value in between. Understanding that any change to the current schedule would need to be finalized generally by the end of October is what the assessor's office has said in the past. And we could certainly have that discussion with them. And a public hearing would be required for any changes in the, in the income exemption limits.
So just a quick question, would that public hearing have to take place before the end of October then? If this were?
That's my understanding, but we'd have to verify that with the town.
Yeah.
Can I answer any questions? Sorry, it was kind of a technical analysis, but I'm happy to, to dig further into it if there's, if there's any questions.
Can I go back to clarify one point?
Sure.
On slide number eleven, alternative scenarios, just so we can spell the? On slide number 11, alternative scenarios, just so we can spell this out for us and the public listening. So let's say we do no sliding scale with the, the limit set at 50,000. The impact on the $200,000 home, you said it would be $14. So if you owned a home valued at $200,000, you'd add $14 total to the tax bill or?
If we adopted the, the town's income limit at 50,000.
Okay.
It would be adding $14 to the already 27. So it'd be 41.
Okay, so 41 per $1,000 of assessed value?
No, that would be the impact on your tax.
The impact on your tax bill, okay.
Right, the, the tax rate would be impacted at the top line.
Okay.
And then you extrapolate that out to the tax, impact on a tax bill would be the $41.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? First, Lou, thank you very much for putting all this work together, given an October timeframe that gives us a sort of finite window to do some research and analysis on this. I don't have any other questions at the moment. If any of us do, we can direct them through you and Dr. McGowan just to get clarifications as we sort of digest this information and decide on possible next steps. Any, I want to clarify one thing, any actions we take, if we make any changes, the impact would be felt in the 2025, 2026 school year, is that accurate?
If, correct. I think the tight timeline would be if we wanted to act for the next, the next tax year, the next tax bill year, which is '25, '26 fiscal year for us.
Yep.
But again, I'd have to verify that timeline with the town. I didn't have the opportunity to do that.
That's fine. Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. We have a couple of other things here. First, an approval of a SEACER, that's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Doesn't look like it sounds, which is SEACER. Resolution for the Council Rock Primary School Phase Two Capital Improvement Project. It's just the normal environmental review as we want to move forward with some of these things. Questions with regards to this resolution? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Oh, no, okay. Approval of the capital project resolution for the 2024 Council Rock Primary School, SEACER comes first. Phase Two Capital Improvement Project, we talked about this, we had the chance to be in Council Rock for our last meeting or two meetings ago, I think now, to see some of the changes as we're trying to build a consistent standard throughout this school. Questions with regards to this capital project resolution? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Sorry.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Staying with this theme of the work being expected for Council Rock, we have approval of election inspectors for the capital project vote on December 4th. That's a note to everybody, the capital project vote for the work we're looking to do in Council Rock to try to bring everything up to standard will take place on December 4th and because it's a, a capital vote, we need election inspectors. Motion to approve the election inspectors for that project vote on December 4th.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, acceptance of the annual financial statements. We're going to do this in two pieces, myself and Christina and Karen. We're in audit meeting before, we'll do a brief update on that when we do our reports. But first, we're going to do acceptance of the annual financial statements in the management letter for the period ending June 30th, 2024. Any questions first with regards to these financial statements?
I didn't see a copy of it and, on the website and, or in our one note. That was my only question.
I had them. I don't see them here, but I had them.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. What am I sorry about? I had reviewed them already because I had a copy.
You can table that and approve them at the next meeting, which is probably better to do, yep.
Yeah, let's do that so we can get them. Associated with that will be some corrective action plans we'll also be approving at that time. So thank you, Eleanor, I appreciate that. So we'll table that for the next meeting.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Just because it's, it's due to the state by October 15th, this is just a motion to accept, it's not really approval of anything.
Okay.
So I asked the board maybe if you would consider accepting it and then we can review it and highlight it at the next board meeting.
Well, you could do that also on the recommendation of those on the audit committee.
Yeah.
If you're just accepting their reports, you're not approving anything.
Sure, the three of us did have an opportunity to review the documents. We received them under separate cover. They are as expected at this time of year, so I would recommend accepting them.
Yes, would I.
Thank you very much.
No, I appreciate that. Is anybody uncomfortable with that? It's okay if you are.
I, I would like to see that they're posted somewhere, you know, because it's not posted at this time of year.
They usually are always in your one note.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I think there's probably confusion because of vacation, so.
But thank you, yes, I accept other people's recommendations.
If we see that ahead of time, if you let us know, we can double check that if you look through here before the meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to now re-put forward a motion for acceptance of the annual financial statements. And I'm sorry, I'll, I'll note this, on behalf of Christina and Karen, we also did review the corrective action plans, so I'll be putting forward a motion to also accept the corrective action plans. As an audit committee, we were fully aligned with those corrective action plans, I can tell you that. Okay, so, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Good. So acceptance, motion to approve, to accept, excuse me, the annual financial statements and management letter for the period ending June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, associated with this, also motion to accept the corrective action plans for that same time period in the associated financial statements for the period ending June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Christina?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you. An apology for not having that on there. Next up, we've got approval of second read policies. These were the ones that were discussed at the past meeting. I will read them each before I put forward a motion to approve. First, policy 7150, students' remote instruction. Next, policy 7540, students' suicide. And finally, policy 1510, bylaws, regular board meeting and rules. Quickly make note that there's two that are very format and procedural and one that's kind of jarred, we've had a big discussion about that. Grateful for the work of Deanna and the entire administration in terms of just watching out for kids and staff and everything. Tough subjects to talk about, but we need to have policies in place. Motion, I'm sorry, any questions with regards to the second read policies? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Also here is discussed previously a Merino Memorandum of Agreement binding between the Brighton Central School District and the Brighton Teachers Association. You've had the, the chance to review that MOA. Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have an approval of a construction change order. And we do these this way because there's so much work going on with all these schools to be as transparent as possible. Anything over $50,000 where there's a change, we'll talk about gym floors a little bit. That's going to be a great topic to talk about in a month because they're almost done. But this is in regards to some things going with gym floors, just so we have full transparency on all our reports. Any questions first with regards to this construction change order? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Christina?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our students, they're active. And we are grateful tonight, as we go to reports, for our reports from our student representative, Dagny, there's two things to note here. She's a very good fencer and she's at a tournament. Also, don't mess with Dagny because she knows how to use a sword. We just sort of note that. And we are thankful that Naomi is here subbing and I think you are the co-secretary, correct? Thank you very much for being here. We're going to get an update from you, Naomi.
Thank you for having me. So I'll start off with the academics. BHS had their open house last Thursday night where parents and guardians came in to meet the teachers. 12 students have been commanded into the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program, which was based on their SAT, ACT, and PSAT scores in 2023. Many colleges have come to a BHS in the school day to host information sessions for all students interested, varying from colleges like Ivy League, SUNY Schools, and community colleges. Now on to the sports. Brighton football is currently undefeated this year, which is very exciting, including their win on homecoming, which was two weeks ago. And Brighton girls tennis had their senior night tonight and the rest of the fall sports will be honoring, honoring their seniors throughout October. Brighton girls soccer has teacher appreciation night tonight where they will be honoring and thanking multiple teachers for their support through their academic career. From executive council, we had our homecoming festivities, which were huge, huge successes here. And we had our homecoming dance where almost 300 people attended, which was very exciting, along with the majority of the school participating in our annual pep rally and sports assembly. The winner of the annual homecoming competition were the seniors where they scored highest between the dance, the mural, and the float. And through our executive meetings, we've been reviewing the home, homecoming and we've just been analyzing what has been good or bad for what we need to change for next year. This year, we have decided to have monthly events for the school, so we have been planning those meetings for the upcoming months and we have a possible fall event in October. The club fair was held last week with many new events and meetings planned for the school year. Students signed up for the new clubs and attended meetings held this week and last week. Key Club has an apple picking event on October 6th at Schueth's Apple Farm and all goods will be donated to the Brighton Food Cover. French Club had its first meeting today to plan events for the year. Photo Club, which is a brand-new club to Brighton High School, had its first meeting this week. And the Brighton Business Club had its informational meeting today and there are currently almost or about 140 members signed up between these two clubs, which is DECA and FBLI. Brighton High School's theater department will be performing A Black Coffee on November 8th and 9th, which is a thrilling murder mystery play. And the winter musical Mama Mia is already in its early planning stages. And finally, the Rans Exchange Program will start in two weeks where 47 students from Lisee Sevenye will be at BHS students' home, partaking in various activities in Rochester. And in February, BHS students will travel to Rans and do the same.
Wow, amazing.
Just amazing. Excellent job, Naomi. Thank you very much for subbing for Dagny, appreciate it. Next up, we've got Monroe County School Board Association, three different committees. First up is District Operations, which Karen and I attended together.
This was my first District Operations meeting in a while. That's a change from Information Exchange, oh no, I'm sorry, from Labor Relations. Labor Relations. Talking about District Operations these days. It was a very interesting presentation on a local district's experience limiting use and availability of cell phones to their students during the day. A lot of things for us to consider. I know that this has been a topic much discussed and analyzed by our secondary principals, Dr. Edmonds and Dr. Hall. I know that Dr. Hall and Dr. Edmonds currently have a mix of older and newer policies regarding this that seem to be working well for us this year. And then, of course, we're going to see what the governor decides to do when it comes to cell phones in our buildings. But it was interesting to hear another district's, a district that's in many ways different from ours, their experience just with an outright cellphone ban. So do you have anything to add, Larry?
I would just say the, the mechanics of it and the culture in each school district in each town is different. Our high school being, having an open campus and being so close to 12 corners, some schools are much more geographically isolated, so the opportunity to go places. So there's a lot of great ideas. I'm, I'm, I'll be political for a second. I'm a little radicent of being given a mandate. Boy, I'm getting in trouble for this.
No, I'm just saying.
No, so from the governor because I'm really confident that our administration and us as a seven-member board elected can figure out what's best for our students. And I have, you referenced, I have great faith that Danielle and Tom know what to do, that nothing's perfect, that we'll make mistakes and will just continue to improve in that regard. So my thoughts with a tiny bit of politics, I apologize.
I have a great deal of faith in the people here to make those decisions, including the seven of you. And the state has a proud, rich tradition of local control, which you were elected to decide, the governor is not. Nor does the governor have statutory ability to decide that for schools or any constitutional authority to do so. That won't stop the governor from including Article 78 language in the budget that could require state funding hinge on particular rules.
Isn't that what Alabama has done? Is it Alabama?
Correct. It's also the way people do things like put the Ten Commandments in front of classrooms, which is not being proposed in New York, but is a similar type of overreach in the state government. So I would hope that they would continue to allow local schools to make those decisions. I actually don't have a problem personally with the cellphone ban at all, that's not my issue. I think though that should be a thoughtful discussion through the state education department, the board of regents, and locally elected boards of education that should make those choices with more than a dose of politics.
I, I will, I will say this, it is, there's a lot to learn from every school that tries to do it. We did share the information with Tom and Danielle and we're always listening and observing what others are doing and trying to learn from their mistakes. Not everybody has to do the same thing, but there's always things to be learned. So it was well-attended, greatly appreciate the mix from all the different school districts and the questions asked, so.
And really commending, of course, Monroe County School Board Association for providing that kind of programming and professional development for school board members.
Absolutely.
Can you pass along great materials to us? We appreciate that, too, so thank you.
Information Exchange.
I attended that on September 11th. It was really an introductory meeting to meet the new members of the committee as well as the superintendents who attend that meeting. And it was really an overview of all the resources that Monroe County School Board Association gives to our districts and tools that we can use.
Karen Hatch is also the co-chair of the Legislative Committee, so I will turn it over to her to discuss legislative.
We, what date did we start school? September 3rd? Okay, then that means Legislative Committee met on September 4th. So we met September 4th for the first time this year and we reviewed our legislative priorities from the previous school year and began talking about what the legislative priorities for that committee will promote to our local legislators. And in that effort, we, we've been having meetings with our locals throughout the summer that continue today. A group of us met with Diman Meeks, who represents mostly our CSD, Gates Chilai, a little bit of Wheatland Chilai. But from our perspective, our local legislators represent all of us, right? They, they generally work together as a team when it comes to schools and talked to Assembly member Meeks about our concerns about the foundation aid revision process. We did talk a little bit about cell phones, about the science of reading. But those are always great opportunities for us to learn what the legislators' priorities are and then also to inform them of what's actually happening on the ground in our schools. The committee meets again tomorrow. I won't be there, I'll be in Florida with my middle child, Teddy. But Christina will be there and we'll begin talking about what position papers, those, those set the actual priorities for the year that we'll be revising in order to present to our locals starting in December.
Thank you. Do have a quick update from Mark Okonovich, our former board president. Grateful that he is a great servant, a BOSI's representative for this year and represent Brighton, among other things. Just a couple quick updates received from him. Monroe One BOSI's Board of Ed re-elected Kim McCluskey and Tom Nespaka as president and vice president respectively at their reorg in July. The Monroe One Main Office Department's covering the district business, human resources, and communication offices will be relocating this week to their new space at 1,000 Pittsburgh Victor Road, commonly referred to as Bushnell Space. And current offices that they're in on the main Fairport campus will be repurposed for an additional instructional space, which is really cool, making more space for kids. So that's great. Also, their Board of Ed received required training and updates on child abuse in an educational setting at their September 5th meeting and approved district-wide safety plans as well. As noted, we thank Mark for his continued service to this community and his work at BOSI's because they, as we all know, they do great things there. Karen referenced that the year has just sort of started, so I'll start with Carrie Lynn and come this way in regards to other board member reports, knowing that not everything got rolling. So Carrie Lynn, anything else you want to report on?
Yep, I attended the PTSA Hit the Ground Running 5K on September 14th. It was incredible. I kicked off the actual race, which was awesome. We had over 200 participants and many, many more spectators, so it was an exciting event that raised a really good amount of money for our PTSA, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Over the summer, I had the first meeting of, we do curriculum reviews on all kinds of different curriculums and I'm serving on the health curriculum review. It was a really great meeting run by Dr. Yu and it should be really good that we're just going to be continuing to meet throughout the semester.
Thank you very much. Esther?
I was unable to attend the first
I was unable to attend the first school-based equity team meeting for BHS and the information exchange meeting. I was out of town. Looking forward to the the next Curriculum Council meeting, which is on October seventeenth, and our Hiring Practices Committee meeting, the date is to be determined.
Thank you very much. Karen?
I attended the first PTSA meeting of the year, which is, always feels like coming home for me as a former PTSA person, but also just a reminder of all the work so many people are doing in the districts to make this a great place for kids and for families. So just always appreciative of how many hours and what kind of time folks devote to making sure that opening is a, is a good time for everybody, right? And a comfortable, safe place for folks. I met with, as a district, with all the school-based equity teams. Our first meeting of the year was an all-call. Dr. Yu programmed an amazing speaker for us, but I forgot my notebook. I know his, it's Dr. Cedric?
Michael Simmons.
Michael Simmons?
Simmons.
Simmons. His first name?
Cedric.
Okay, thank you. Really great presentation about why, why we do the work and how to keep doing the work under challenging circumstances and a lot of thinking about our, the roles we play in society and how that influences how we do the work. So thanks for programming that. It was fantastic.
Thank you.
I have nothing really passed to have attended, but the next information exchange is actually something sort of interesting. It's the Cornell Cooperative Extension for Monroe County is presenting on agriculture in the classroom, nutrition education, farm to school. And with our middle school greenhouse, I think that we might have, you know, a lot to say about that. So that should be a really interesting meeting coming up October nine.
Great. Christina?
So I recently joined the Monroe County School Board Association's Communication Outreach Advisory Committee, which means that we'll write as a committee a few white papers a year to help communicate issues that are happening around our state and our county for our school board members. So that will be an interesting one. That's a new one for me. And, you know, I serve on the New York State School Board Association's DEI Committee, and recently, an Asian-American school board member in Albany reached out to us asking if we could create some kind of affinity, and so I'm working on that with NISBA right now.
Thank you. I'll finish just quickly with, we did have, audit has fired up, and we had our audit committee, which is myself, Christina, and Karen. Did an initial review with both our auditor, as well as Lou and Dahlia. Continue to be very confident in our financial position as a school district in terms of how we're running things and how we're tracking everything. Always room to do better, but just an exceptional job by that team and close monitoring. I feel great about where we are. We're gonna have some rough waters ahead with a bunch of different things happening at once. We'll be talking more about that as the year goes on and as we prepare for the next budget. We've got a lot in front of us. It's gonna be some difficult discussion, so we'll prepare for that. Also, from a construction standpoint, I mentioned it before, there's always a lot of work going on. We're gonna, we're gonna try to really get to a consistent standard across all four of our schools. Of particular note, I don't want to take anything away from Dr. McGowan, we have two gyms that are real close to being done. French Road, we're gonna be a little bit late, but it's gonna be fantastic. We were hoping to have that available today. It's gonna be a couple of weeks out. And then the high school gym is expected to be done at the end of the month, as is the case with working in any building. Once you start taking things apart, you always find something you didn't expect to find. And it's hardly ever the case that you find something you didn't expect to find that's a good thing. So greatly appreciate Lou, our partners in campus construction, and most particularly our buildings folks who are just diligent and working sort of around the clock to get things done correctly. Both those gymnasiums are gonna be amazing when they're done, and I'm anxious to have people be able to see them. I hope I didn't take anything from what you may have said.
That's perfect.
Nicole, your turn.
Yay. Before I start this portion of the report, I just wanna do a huge shout-out for all of our faculty and staff. As part of the VTA, we have a team that participates in Making Strides, and we, I'm one of the coordinators, but we really wanted, one of the team leaders, we really wanted to extend that invitation to faculty and staff, not just to the teachers. And if you were in any of the buildings today, it was just a sea of pink, and it was really wonderful. So just a shout-out to everyone who wants to show their support in such a great cause.
Thank you.
So Mrs. DeShields's class, oh my goodness, what a great way to have your first day of school. So in Mrs. DeShields's class, they tried to save Fred, who was a very adventurous worm who was thrown overboard, and it was the job of the students to put Fred back into his boat. So they had to use the gummy worm, a plastic cup, a lifesaver gummy, and they weren't allowed to touch him. They could use four paper clips, but they really used their habits of mind to think interdependently, flexibly, and strive for accuracy. This looks amazing. Some great teamwork going on there. In Mrs. Shank's class, they learned about the learning pit and discussed how it helps us grow as students. They then created their own learning pits, and we do start introducing this in first grade also. I just love the photograph of the little girl looking up, thinking. It's just, that's exactly what we want them to be doing. So you can see some great photos of her class. Mrs. Harp's tech classes started the year by learning about passwords, and she taught them about encryption and taught them the Morse code. And they started sending messages back and forth to each other after learning about, I wanna be a Fras. I wanna be a student of Fras. Flute fun outside on a nice day, making the most of nice weather. At TCMS, English eight students started the year by reading a piece by Jason Reynolds, Ten Things I've Been Meaning to Say to You, when they're working on their own. And then last, a huge shout-out to Courtney Doricio for the donation of beautiful magazines for the studio art classes. And that's it.
Hey, thank you.
Well, as always, thank you for the pictures. I feel conflicted about seeing leaves change. Right? I mean, like, it's here, you know what I mean? But your pictures are great, so thank you very much. Next up is the PTSA report. Danielle?
Nice to meet everyone, and I'm glad to hear some already people talking about the PTSA. The Brighton High School PTSA would like to thank Elaine Ellis and longtime hospitality chair, Soma Changuar, for helping welcome the staff with bagels and other treats on August twenty-eighth. On September eighteenth, they held the meeting with the principal over Zoom. The Twelve Corners Middle School PTSA had several events to kick off the year. The sixth grade and new student orientation for all grades was held on August twenty-seventh, and it was well-attended. Lock Day was held on August twenty-ninth and thirtieth for the seventh and eighth grades. The Twelve Corner Middle School PTSA would like to thank their hospitality chair, Lindsay Keck, who provided teachers and administration with a welcome-back breakfast on the first day of school. The PTSA also hosted the urban suburban orientation on, welcome-back breakfast on the, sorry, on orientation. On September eleventh, they hosted the Twelve Corners Middle School Meeting with the principal. The topic was Welcome to the Middle School. The next day, they held Curriculum Night for Parents and Guardians. Picture Day was held on September twelfth and thirteenth, and finally, the outdoor education program was moved from overnight event to an all-day event, and was held on September twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. The sixth grade activity committee will hold their first activity night on October nineteenth. The theme's going to be Spooky Activity Night. I misplaced slides, the last picture on the one. For French Road Elementary, the PTSA held their event chair orientation on August twenty-second. On August twenty-eighth, they provided popcorn and M&amp;M's as part of the Inside Out theme for opening day faculty meeting. Students had the chance to meet the principals at Popsicles with the Principals event on August twenty-nine, and they provided donut holes to welcome teachers and staff on the first day of school. Also on the first day of school, parents serving as bus helpers came to help students get off the bus and into the building. On September third through the thirteenth, the PTSA ran the backpack and school supply drive to collect supplies for papers and pencils and brain community. They provided movie and coloring books for child watch night at curriculum nights, and then on September tenth, they cleaned out the courtyards and tied their balls at the school. On September twenty-third, they provided snack and drinks for September faculty meeting. The PTSA sold pizza, drinks, and spiritware at the family picnic on September twenty-seventh. School pictures were held on the thirtieth, and they held their meeting with the principal the same night. The Council Rock PTSA held their Popsicles with the Principals event on the Council Rock playground. The hospitality chair provides snacks for teachers and staff to welcome them back to school, and it concluded their backpack and supply school drive on September thirteenth. The following week, they held their Square One Art Night on September twentieth, and on the same night, they hosted their first Fun Fruit, first Fun Friday of the year. The PTSA fundraising committee has selected a new committee chair, Lindsay Keck. The PTSA held their second annual Brighton Believes 5K. It was a great success. In addition to five, two hundred runners that participated, French Road and Brain, or sorry, French Road and Council Rock tied for the highest staff participation. Their next event will be a book fair through Barnes &amp; Noble and Pittsburgh Plaza in New York.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much for taking the time to bring that update, and welcome. Superintendent?
Thank you. First, we say Shana Tova, the members of our community beyond, who will be celebrating Rosh Hashanah Thursday and Friday, as we will be closed for students on those days. We really hope that people's time is enjoyable and certainly joyous as well. But as that celebration winds down, many members of our community will also be commemorating the very tragic adversity of the horrendous attack in Israel on October seventh. Commemoration is also a reminder of what I would refer to as the tragedy of the innocent. So many humans are innocent victims of violence committed in the name of hatefulness or injustice. And we mourn for the loss of life and victimization of everyone, and will continue to support our children and families through our mental health team and the resources that we will provide to the community in our upcoming communication, and encourage people to reach out and let us know how we can help support them and their family. We had a great event here last week, the Community Leaders Program. Maybe you were a part of that also. Ballpark fifty or so community leaders who were able to come and hear about our strategic plan and engage in dialogue with each other. It's such a great event that happens twice a year for community leaders, once for religious leaders. Good opportunity for people to connect with each other, though, and be connected in the work as a community.
I'll commend your team for putting together a nice series of presentations and talking through the blueprint as well, presenting it in, you know, easy-to-digest pieces, good overview, gives everybody a really good sense of what we're about. So it's not because you were off the stage that I appreciate them, but it was, it was great to see them out, talking about what they're working on.
They were far more thoughtful and insightful in that regard and did a really, really great job presenting, so I'm very proud of them and their work. At our next meeting in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day on October fourteenth, we will, as we have now for several years, begin with an acknowledgement of the land we are in and the nature of the journey to be here, at the expense of those whose space we now occupy. So we'll have that prepared for you as well.
Great. Thank you. Consent agenda is next. Before we start on the consent agenda, I will note to everybody that the, all the financial statements are in place now. If you would like to review them and have any questions, so just please note that they're there. With regards to the consent agenda, there's the normal personnel agenda updates, a bunch of fundraising activities, as I like to say, great opportunities to eat in support of our kids. Like, there's fewer greater opportunities than that. A lot in regards to Brighton Cheerling, and we saw some of them tonight, so that's great. Field trip approvals, it's a cross-country trip, that's the Manhattan, as in Manhattan, New York City, Manhattan Invitational, October twelfth to the fourteenth. And as is our practice, I will read out the gifts, because there's some really great ones here. A gift in the amount of one thousand one hundred to go into the PTSA hardship fund administered by the Counseling Department at Council Rock. The money was donated in memory of Debbie Schussler and Magda White. They were both much-loved teaching assistants at Council Rock who are champions of children with the greatest needs. Really lovely gift there. A gift in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars for the Counseling Department for the purchase of play equipment specifically selected to be used by students who have medical, physical, and social development needs that complicate their ability to play at recess. A gift in the amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to go to Twelve Corners Middle School Black Student Union to attend the RBTL production of The Wiz in February. I'm old enough to know that Michael Jackson was in that when it first came out. I'm just gonna note that. As part of this teacher, I'm sorry, as part of this theater experience, some of the show's cast and production staff will lead a lesson during a BSU meeting. A gift in the amount of two thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars for the five science teachers, for five science teachers to attend this fall's Science Teachers Association of New York State Conference. This funding is provided by the Brighton Education Fund's David De Haven Memorialship, Memorial Fellowship, which supports staff development for the middle and high school science departments. Just a really great set of gifts there as part of the consent agenda. Any questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Couple of quick notes before we adjourn. Bill, Dr. Christina Lee was up for the Rochester Greater Chamber of Commerce Colors of Success Leadership Award. She was one of only fourteen finalists. A few of us were able to be there to celebrate her, continue to appreciate all she does for our community, not just Brighton, but the greater Rochester and Monroe community at large. So congratulations to her.
Yay. Can I say something now?
Please.
I just want to say, like, anybody who works in diversity education or diversity in general, it's not something you do alone, and I know how important that conversation is here in the district and the conversations we have as a board and with our teachers and staff and administrators, like, honestly, like, this isn't just, you know, this isn't in isolation, this is with all of you, so I appreciate all of you. So thank you so much.
And me in regards, appreciate you. Thank you. Next meeting, again, quoting my favorite American philosopher, Willie Nelson, we will be on the road again.